Okay, is everyone ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting in order to today's date is Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. The time is 5:30 PM. We have two absent councillors today, but we do have a quorum. Pam, would you please take the role call?
Motley.
Here.
Freedle.
Present.
Carlson is absent. Beyondich.
Present.
Johnson is absent. Baranzelli. Huffy.
President. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody from the general public that is in attendance today to address the city council. Is there anyone in the council chambers today that would like to address the council at this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move to item five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval correction of the minutes of September 10th, 2024 council meeting. 5.1B, the September 9th, 2024 special meeting. Item 5.1C, the September 17th, 2024 special meeting. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 24-018, the Schedule of Bills. 5.3 is approved travel request for Officer Dan Liland from the Virginia Police Department to attend the Total Zero Deaths or the TZD Seminar on October 21st through the 23rd of 2024 in St. Cloud at a cost of $321.70. Item 5.4 is approve the travel request for Officer Troy Mealy to attend the Pepperball Certification, October 16th, 18th, 2024 in Cogge Grove, Minnesota, at a cost of $1,786.88. This is a non-lethal training for non-lethal use of force exercise, something that's mandated through the Use of Force statute. Item 5.5 is to approve the 2M liquor license for flamers doing business as Flamers Incorporated. And a late addition to the agenda, item 5.6, approve the travel request for Eric Jonison to attend the SUSAR Conference, which is the Urban Search and Rescue Conference, November 9th through the 13th, 2024 in Orlando, Florida, at a cost of $2,191. And this is covered by a grant. And these are the concreted items that are before the councillor today, looking for council action.
I will move the approval of the consent agenda as documented.
A councillor Freedle moves to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support? Support by councillor Baranzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Councillor Beyondich.
Thank you. And I would like to thank, I said Eric, for letting us know that his travel was covered by a grant. I think it's important that the public realizes that when they fill out these grant requests that that covers their travel or whatever they're asking of us. So I would like to thank him.
Thank you, councillor Beyondich. So we'll move to item six on the agenda, appearances. There's no one scheduled to appear before the council meeting today. Once again, an opportunity for anyone in the audience that'd like to address the council, you're welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to item number seven on the agenda, which is the clinic lease, item 7.1. And we have an update from our attorney's office with respect to where we're at and how we're moving forward with the clinic lease.
Mr. Lindsay informed me that they're still having discussions and they're ongoing, they're going in the right direction, but at this time he has no update.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from the council with respect to that clinic lease? Okay, thank you. We'll move to item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1, the planning and zoning meeting that was held on September 9th, 2024. Item 8.1A is approve the variance request for Benishy Dunkley and Christopher Duna at 1124 Seventeenth Street South for a fence of three feet for a maximum height of five feet, where two feet is allowed in a front yard corner lot, with the condition that the fence remain transparent, and a request for a fence of three feet for a maximum height of five feet, where two feet is allowed on a side yard on a corner lot, with the condition that the fence remain transparent.
I'll move approval.
Councillor Freedle moves to approve. Is there support?
Support.
By councillor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.2, approve the resignation of Don Bird from the Planning and Zoning Commission effective immediately.
I will move the approval with saying thank you to him for, I think, 27 years of serving on that commission, so reluctantly approving this resignation.
Councillor Freedle reluctantly moves to approve and accept the resignation from Mr. Don Bird from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there support?
Support.
Support by councillor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Beyondich.
Thank you. And I would also like to thank Don. He has worked tirelessly, and I really appreciated all of his input. He had the knowledge from all the years of him doing this. And as I sat at this meeting, for the discussion of the reason that he, as in his letter for resigning, I could totally agree with him. We had a little bit of a discussion on ordinances. And I told him that I feel the frustration that ordinances are past, but that's about as far as it goes. It's really hard to get everything into compliance, and I think that's, that's the gist of his resignation, and I totally feel his frustration after I read the book of ordinances. And I often wonder when we pass another ordinance, are we going to enforce it? We spend a lot of time researching and doing everything we need to do to get an ordinance in place, and then to see things not followed, I wouldn't say not followed up on, but for exactly what he wrote in his letter. So I feel the same thing, and I really do appreciate everything Don has done for the city for as long as he has done it, and he was a wealth of knowledge on that commission. So, thank you, Don.
Thank you, councillor Beyondich. I too want to echo my great appreciation for Mr. Bird's 26 or 27 years of serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He was a strong leader, very cognizant and very knowledgeable, and took that job very seriously. So, Don, thank you for your service and wish you all the very best as you move on to your next challenge in your life. So, thanks again. Item 8.3, adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the IRRB Mindland Reclamation Program.
So moved.
Moved to approve by councillor Motley. Is there support? By councillor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4, adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the IRRB Commercial Redevelopment Grant Program.
So moved.
Moved to approve by councillor Motley. Is there support? By councillor Baranzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.5, adopt the resolution to hire Patrol Officer Parker James Fleshland contingent upon passing the required background checks. Moved to approve by councillor Freedle. Is there support? By councillor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Well, we're down five, so this will help a little bit moving forward. So we're fortunate to find a qualified candidate in hopes that he passes all those tests. So we vote. All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Two additional items to the council agenda today. Item 8.6 is adopt the resolution to hire a single role EMT Deanna Scouten.
So moved.
Moved to approve by councillor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By councillor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.7, adopt the resolution to hire single role EMT Aiden Olavanti. Moved to approve by councillor Freedle and supported by councillor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 9.1, Committee of the Whole Meeting that was held on September 3rd, 2024. We'll turn this portion of our meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bendis. Britt?
Thank you. On September 3rd, 2024, we had our Committee of the Whole Meeting. While Christensen from People's Service was present to discuss the wastewater treatment plant chemical feed study that we had been working on with Hawkins Chemical, using the Aqua Hawk phosphorus removal chemical. After much discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the proposed program of switching between the two phosphorus reduction products seasonally for the wastewater treatment chemical feed, with the Aqua Hawk being used in the warmer months, and then we'll go back to the FX 300 in the cooler months.
Thank you.
I'll move the approval of that program.
Moved to approve by councillor Freedle. Is there support?
Support.
By councillor Motley. Further discussion? This is a cost-saving measure moving forward, required to have these chemicals in order to meet the MPC requirements. Our People's Services has, with our staff and our engineering and all of our professionals have said that this is the best way in order to treat that, and at the same time, we're saving the city a significant amount of money moving forward. So, thank you for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Tom Kelly from Walker, Jerran, Hani, which is our auditing firm, was present to discuss the information on the city's fiscal year 2023 audit. It was a very nice presentation. Mr. Kelly did a great job. After the presentation, it was moved and supported to accept the fiscal year 2023 audit report as presented by Walker, Jerran, Hani.
I'll move to approve the audit report.
Councillor Motley moves to approve the audit report presented by Walker, Jerran, Hani. Is there support?
All support, with also thanking Sheri for all the work that she puts into the budgetary process and get us a relatively positive review on this past audit. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Moved and supported, supported by councillor Freedle. Further discussion? I'll echo that, too. Walker, Jerran, Hani indicated, the representation that was here, that our staff, which is, who were tirelessly being short-staffed in that department for a period of time after, it was reduced down to two people. They were very impressed with how they put this budgeting together for the audit and got everything prepared. So thank you for that staff and to Sheri as well. So thank you for that, councillor Freedle. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matt Reed, our engineer of record, was present to discuss change order request number two for the sewer rehabilitation phase one project. The actual change order amount was $31,173. However, SCH was giving us a reimbursement of $12,954.01 for a total cost of the change order number two of $18,813.23.
The city's portion.
The city's portion. That would be obligated. This is regarding the main storm sewer feed that's on the south side of town. It was moved and supported to approve change order number two for the sewer rehabilitation phase one for the increase in the Contract of Utility Systems in America in the amount of, it was the total amount $31,173 with the reduction, so it takes us down to $18,813.23. And it also extends the project for six days with the final completion date honor before September 30th, and I'm happy to report they paged today, so the streets are open today.
Very good. Thank you, Britt. So looking for a motion to adopt the resolution for the change order.
So moved.
By councillor Beyondich, moved. Is there support?
Support.
By councillor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. John Lewis from Carl Sanderson was present to give an update on the Public Safety Center project. The precast walls, the first precast walls were coming, came in last week on Tuesday, and if you look now, it looks like a building is starting to form over there. Second Avenue Utility work was almost completed and pavement is expected to be replaced by the 26th. I can report that that was put in yesterday, so that should be open by the end of this week. The site work and utilities are continuing on. When they were working on the sewer portion of the project, they ran into elevations that were higher than they were expected, so they had to reroute the sewer south down Second Avenue, which caused the need for a change order. So change order request, COR number nine, from Carl Sanderson, was approved at the Committee of the Whole Meeting for the sanitary sewer changes on Second Avenue due to the unforeseen subsurface conditions in the amount of $20,792.21.
I'll move the approval of that change order.
Councillor Freedle moves to approve the change order request number nine from Carl Sanderson for sanitary sewer changes at Second Avenue. Is there support?
Support with a comment.
Support by councillor Beyondich for the comment. Further comment? Councillor Beyondich.
And I'm very happy Mr. Lewis is going to keep us abreast of the contingency fund. So each time he gives a report with a change order, we will see that number change. So I was very happy about that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, councillor Beyondich. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Lewis did also report that there's that remaining portion of soil or dirt that is left in the southwest corner of the project site that needs to be remediated. As per the MPC regulations, it was moved and supported to approve proceeding with the contaminated soil remediation in that southwest corner in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
So moved.
Moved to approve by councillor Motley. Is there support? By councillor Beyondich. Moved and supported to approve the proceeding with the contaminated soil remediation for the public safety project located in the southwest corner of the project site in the amount of not to exceed $40,000. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Freedle.
Is there excavation that actually still needs to be done back there? Or is this like a portion of this parking lot? Or, I mean, I'm just wondering, I mean, if you don't disturb the site, then that would be, then we might, so we're just approving in the event that we, I don't quite understand the necessity for this, is reality.
It's when they, we know there's contamination there, because we did a whole bunch of soil borings. We know there's stuff there. And so the MPC requires that we do remove that stuff, and the question mark is how deep is it and how wide is it? So we'll start digging until we get to clean spots, and as soon as we get clean, we stop. So we know that there's something there. We just don't know how, the extent of it quite yet. So that's why they say up to 40,000. They don't think it's extremely large, but, you know, the area, when we did the phase one, we found a lot of things in that area that we didn't know were there. There was a couple of gas stations on Second Avenue back in the twenties, because that was the main highway at the time. There was a butcher shop, which I guess is a known contaminant. There was a dry cleaner. There was a lot of things that we didn't know were there, and then the railroad went through. So that itself is the part of the biggest problem. And this particular corner, the southwest corner, is the corner that it butts up to Staver Foundry, which if you were here when they were doing Highway 53, they found massive contamination in that portion. So we knew there was going to be something, we just didn't know the extent of it. So this is the final remaining piece, and it wasn't in the way of the building. So that's why we didn't address it yet. We were waiting for the last piece of that to take that out, because it wasn't where that building footprint was going to be.
And it's only in the project scope of the project itself, anything beyond that that's not within the scope of the project.
We did not include.
It is not, is being undisturbed and will not be investigated at this point in time.
Not by us, at least.
Yes. So thank you for that, councillor Freedle. But has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the maintenance striping contract with St. Louis County.
So moved.
Do we do this on an annual basis? So it's been moved by councillor Motley. Is there support? By councillor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Deputy Fire Chief Eric Jonison gave a great presentation regarding a new software he is looking to purchase for the fire department called from Locality Media, Inc. This will, this one software will get rid of numerous softwares that they're currently using and bring all of their records into one platform. It was moved and supported to approve entering into an agreement with Locality Media, Inc. for the first due software platform for the Virginia Fire and Ambulance Department.
I'll move the approval of that contract.
Councillor Freedle moves to approve that contract with Locality Media for the Fire Department, EMS. Is there support?
Support.
Support by councillor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Deputy Chief Jonison also gave an update to the council on the Sprint Medic Pilot Program. As soon as they have some of the contracts and some of the agreements in place, so they're bringing it to the council, but he wanted to give us a heads up that the other cities are going to pass there and first, and they'll come to us last when everybody, when we have all the partners determined and defined, and then we'll come back to our council about with the agreements. It was moved and supported to approve the Managed Services Agreement with Pantheon Computers.
So moved.
Moved to approve by councillor Beyondich. Is there support?
Support.
By councillor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We had discussion regarding the items that the Public Works Department was looking for from the, from four, ditching, dragging, and dredging of the areas, the low-lying areas, the ditches and the creeks around here. It was moved and supported to approve purchasing the Workbro grapple bucket from McCoy Equipment. I think that was the one.
Oh, there's been a couple of changes on that. First, it was McCoy, then it went to RMS, and now it's back to McCoy, because the RMS did not have their shipping included in the price, which would have made it more. So it is McCoy for the $18,250.
Thank you. So the request is to approve the purchase of the Workbro grapple bucket for our Public Works Department from McCoy Company at a cost of $18,250, utilizing 2023 capital equipment bond funds, and this is the low bid. Councillor Motley moves to approve. Is there support?
All support.
By councillor Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved to approve the purchase of the Fecan BH047 mulching head for the 180G excavator from McCoy Construction at a cost of $53,500, excuse me, $53,500, utilizing 2023 capital equipment bond funds.
So moved. A move to approve by councillor Freedle. Is there support? By councillor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And we did have the question at the Committee of the Whole Meeting about if we would, if it would be a potential to use mitigation funds from FEMA to pay for this, and we are meeting with FEMA on Monday, actually, and I did mention this equipment to them, and they said potentially, they will meet with us and see what we can do to get this covered.
So potential reimbursement for this.
Potential reimbursement, yes. And I did mention them, we have not started our mitigation yet, and they said that's good, because they will help us with that as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. As soon as I know more, I'll report more as well. It was moved and supported to approve the quote for sandblasting of the interior body of the new Vector truck from Problast Technology, Inc., in the amount of $12,600, utilizing the 23 capital equipment bond funds.
I'll move to approve.
Moved to approve by councillor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By councillor Beyondich. Further discussion?
Mayor, if I may point out, even with the sandblasting, that still makes the dollar amount less than we had budgeted for, for that factor. So we're still within budget.
It's within budget, and it also helps extend the life of the VAC.
Correct.
By lining it to extend the quality of life for that particular piece of equipment.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you, Britt. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Was there movement and support? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the State of Minnesota Office of Traffic Safety for the TZD grant.
And the TCD's grant is Total Zero Deaths Grant that we get every year from the State of Minnesota Office of Traffic Safety. The City of Virginia Police Department is a fiscal agent for that, and all the money is associated with that for special enforcement action based upon the state's requirement is meted out to communities all around, and it's paid for with zero total state money as opposed to coming out of our budget. So it's completely reimbursed and paid for through the State of Minnesota, this program. And the person in the police department who will be operating this now is somebody new. And I did sign the document today, so, okay, thank you.
I will move the application and acceptance of funds.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Freedle to approve. Is there support?
Support.
By councillor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That would be Officer Nyland. Thank you.
It was moved and supported to approve the Professional Technical Services Contract with the Minnesota State College System and Virginia Ambulance Service for the college football games.
football games.
It's moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Freely and supported by?
Support.
Counsel Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
The committee of the whole meeting, we had an update from the Personnel Committee meeting that met on September 10th. It was moved and supported to modify the sewer maintenance job description to a new title of wastewater collections with the updated duties that were listed.
I'll move to support or make the motion.
Counsel Motley moves to make a motion to approve the modification as recommended by the Personnel Committee. Is there support?
All support with an additional comment.
Sure. Support by Counsel Freely for additional comment. Counsel Freely.
Once again, to thank Dan Wolf, who came and gave us firsthand information and firsthand knowledge of the workings of that department, which was very, very helpful in helping us make an informed decision about what we needed to do. So that was good to hear and good to see. Thank you, Dan.
Hey, thank you, Counsel Freely. And Mr. Wolf, it moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to modify the building maintenance repair foreman dash ITMEC position to building maintenance repair foreman park and rec with the updated duties.
It's moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Motley. Is there support?
All support with, and reiterate the same comment with regard to Wes LaValle, who also was at the meeting and also gave us firsthand information. It was very helpful in making the decision. So thank you, Wes.
Two very professional employees there. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the update to the job description for team leader.
Moved to approve by Counsel Freely, who is on the Personnel Committee. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to allow staff to process and post the designated building official position as soon as possible. Sorry, I skipped on library. Excuse me. Let me go back on 9.1Q. It was moved and supported to approve the external posting for the library associate youth services position, which is vacant at this time.
Counsel Freely moves to approve the external posting for the library associate youth services position. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counsel Motley. Further discussion?
I will be, I will be supporting this just because I was informed that this is a very important position down at the library. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comments with respect to the approval of the post externally for this position? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Back to 9.1R. It's moved and supported to allow staff to process and post the designated building official position as soon as possible.
I will move to move forward with the posting or the process to post that designated building official position.
Counsel Freely moves to approve the posting for the designated building official as soon as possible. Is there support? Is there support? Support by Counsel Barnzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Fire Chief Scott Frederson was present at the meeting to discuss the vacancy, the newer vacancy of the Fire Marshal position. Our existing Fire Marshal, Jay Keel, has taken a position of the private sector firm. It was moved and supported to approve the appointment of Mario Del Greco as the Fire Marshal effective September 18, 2024.
Counsel Freely moves to approve the appointment of Mario Del Greco as the Fire Marshal effective September 18, 2024. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counsel Motley for discussion, for the discussion. Counsel Motley.
Will we be paying him for further training to be qualified as the next Fire Marshal?
Yes, there, I can't remember the acronym. There is a grant that pays for that, specific to code-related positions in the fire department. I think he said it was NFAC, but I can't remember exactly what it was. The National Fire Academy, yeah, NFAC pays for that, the entire, all the costs, the mileage, the hotel, the registration, everything.
Okay. Thank you, Britt. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And the former Fire Marshal, Jacob Keel, thank him for his service and his, his commitment in, as a firefighter, paramedic, and then also the Fire Marshal moving forward. And I wish him all the very best in his, in his private sector position. So welcome, Mayor Mario Del Greco. Is there further discussion on Counsel Freely?
So is Mario then being placed in the position in kind of a variance to allow him time to become fully certified in this position? Or does he have experience in this position? That's my concern. Are we just, so was he the only internal person that sought this position?
He was. And it's a very different mindset, going from doing the investigative mindset. And you have to have a certain number, you cannot get the Fire Marshal position, you have a certain number of years on the fire service because you have to have seen so X amount of fires. And he has those qualifications. He will work with the state Fire Marshal really closely now until he gets comfortable on his feet. We always have the state Fire Marshal come anyway for any fires that are suspicious. But he'll start working towards that investigative portion more with the police.
Very specialized.
It's a very specialized thing. And it's a, it's a different, it is a different mindset. So a lot of firefighters don't want to do it and don't want to do that investigative part of it.
And I'm assuming that he'd be in consultation with other Fire Marshals in the state.
100%. Yeah, yep. And Chris Clark, our former Fire Marshal before Jay Keel, is working with the state Fire Marshal Service in the western part of the state. So there's, there's a great connection there that we, I'm sure he'll foster.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Freely. So it has been moved and supported to approve Mario Del Greco as the Fire Marshal for the Virginia Fire Department. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Lindsay noted at the committee of the whole meeting, we weren't ready to take formal action on improving the candidate for the concessionaire services. I don't think we're ready quite yet either. Not ready yet. So we'll bring that to the next meeting. Thank you.
We'll bring that back at the next committee of the whole meeting, hopefully regarding the concessionaire services. Thank you.
Thank you. It was moved and supported to approve the one-day transit merchant license for Chad Yost, who is doing business as Chad's Meat Wagon.
It's moved.
Moved to approve the one-day transit merchant license for Chad Yost doing business as Chad's Meat Wagon by Counsel Beyondich. Is there support?
All support.
By Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Further items from that meeting?
No further items. Thank you. Moved to item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. Is there any city council that would like to give a commission liaison report this evening? Counsel Motley.
This is just in regards to the Parks and Rec Commission. They had a meeting September 18. It looks like the Friends of the Greenhouse will be having their annual plant sale on September 21. Their annual meeting will be October 1. The downtown hanging flower baskets will no longer be maintained by the group who have been doing it for years. Frog and Chair, which is the former lyric, will work on it. Also, at the Iron Show Motors Event Center, both ice arenas will be up and running by October 1. The parks slash rec offices will move to City Hall behind the Engineering Department. Also, a big one here, Minnesota Power is buying naming rights to the ballroom at $100,000 over 10 years, which is pretty awesome. So thank you, Bree. Excellent work. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Motley. Yes, Counsel Freely.
I can just quick, a quick summary review of this morning's Street and Alley Committee meeting.
Please do.
Don't decline. There were four items on the agenda for the Street and Alley Committee meeting this morning. The first was to review the proposed changes to Highway 53 and the North 9th Street intersection, which is primarily a MINDOT operation. There was some discussion in regard to how it will affect the current intersection, which would be closing your access going into Parkville. That would no longer be available. So it would be just a three-way intersection. Counselor, I mean, Mayor Cuffey brought up a good point that they're also going to be eliminating the entrance exit into town. So it would be just an immediate 90-degree turn and suggested that it would be wide enough for like semis turning into town, that kind of thing. So they'll have to make allowances for that. The second agenda item was reviewing school zone information. And we reviewed most of the school, it was, we reviewed all of the school zone information that was related to us from SEH Engineering. Most of the school zones in the city have been painted accordingly. There is a school patrol officer program that's in place for Rock Ridge. So there are students that are flagging intersections, keeping students safe from crossing accordingly. And so really, no additional changes were made or additions made to school zones from our discussion this morning. We also discussed item three, which was the sewer line issue that has arisen near the Lakeview Hotel and the Northland Capital Management Building. SEH also came and provided us with a tentative conceptual drawing of sorts to most efficiently and effectively address those issues. And that'll be further discussed as time comes on. They're going to be doing further research into the cost that we would incur for that as the city would have to pay for that, and what kinds of funding sources we'd be looking to address those issues that have affected that building. And fourthly, we discussed the conversion of one-way streets to two-way streets. And the three streets that were discussed were the First Street South, Second Street South, and Fourth Street South, which are in and around the new elementary school. And the discussion was that those have been for a long time, one-way streets. I'm not exactly sure why we're considering two-way traffic, other than to create efficiencies for traffic flow. And further discussion will be had, I'm sure, with the school district in regard to their preferences, in regard to the, the way traffic is flowing around that, that school at this point in time. And Fourth Street also, the somewhat difficulty is that when the playground was remodeled, then the streets, the sidewalks were widened. Fourth Street right now doesn't appear to actually even have enough room for two-way traffic. But SEH did indicate that Fourth Street is kind of earmarked for infrastructure completion in the next three to four years. And maybe at that time, when that occurs, then that street could potentially be widened into two-way traffic. But, so those discussions will be ongoing as well until decisions are reached. And that was our discussion this morning at Street and Alley.
Thank you, Counsel Freely. If I just may add the fact that the, the one-way streets where the staff is going to be looking at the potential in the years to come, whether that's going to be feasible, not only around the school, but by the post office there, that street and Second Street, also going north and south to the, so, and Matt Reed did bring up a good point about the fact that there's an issue with respect to when there's one-way streets, there's, the way the state aid money is allocated by having these one-way streets, it may reduce some of the state aid money we have. But there's ways in which to negotiate that so that our state aid money stays in place and, and that we're able to continue to move forward with that. But it's going to be considered one of the challenges, I think that was discussed at that meeting, was the fact that, you know, the people that are affected, people, not only residents, but the businesses and the US Post Office may be affected by that. So that's something staff and the Engineering Department will be working on and bringing it back to the Street and Alley Commission for additional discussion. Counsel Beyondich.
Thank you. Just the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was held on September 19. And a lot of conversation is taking place on fence heights, that I believe that's why it was changed from, was it two feet or three feet to four, three to four, because the panels, the panels for fencing is, has increased. The corner lot that this, that we just approved, the variance for the five feet, there's circumstances with children and pets that they, they feel they need the higher fence and it's chain link, so it's visible, with the condition that the fence remains transparent. Because when you come to a corner, it's hard to see if the fence has things in front of it to see around that. So that's becoming more of a normal now, I think, in town. And that was, that was about it from that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Beyondich. Okay. Any other Commission Liaison Reports? I would like to say that if I just bring up real quickly, you talked about planning and zoning, and we talked about Street Alley stuff, and we did bring that up. And somebody came to me again this afternoon, there, along many parts of the streets in the city of Virginia, there's some challenges, with some views are being blocked at intersections because the extended growth of shrubs. These, what do you call them? They grow up along the fence line there. And they're like cedar bushes or regular bushes. Anyway, they're, one of the examples, the intersection of Fifth Avenue and Eighth Street South, which the growth is so high, not only is you be coming over the sidewalk, people have to edge out onto the intersection from the stop sign to be able to see. So I think if we could have staff take a look at that and other areas, and I think a list will be compiled to present to you, Britt. But that was the one example that was given. So thank you for that. Okay, any other Commission Liaison Reports to be brought forth? Okay, how about Department Head Reports? Do you have anything, Britt?
I, I guess I just want to say thank you to the city and to Rev. Virginia for a very wonderful food truck festival.
Yes, very much so.
That held up very well. It was a lot of really happy vendors, a lot of really happy people. It was a really fun day. Thank you for letting us do that on Chestnut Street.
Yes, thank you. I, I enjoyed it. You know, it's a volunteer in helping out and see how, the whole system was very well organized, the event, a lot of food trucks. And I spent a total of $118 in some odd cents at that food truck festival, buying for other people and myself as well. So I think it was money well spent. So yeah, kudos and congratulations to Rev. Virginia for putting on a great event. So thank you for that. Okay. Any other Department Head Reports? Jody, do you have something from our library? Jody Grabanowski, our library director, who on a very regular basis attends the city council meetings and has an update for us. Jody, welcome.
Hi, everyone. So happy September. We are in fall. Tomorrow, which is the 25th of September, we are doing upcycling with books. And it is a page, we're doing REITs. So that starts at 2:30. All are welcome. The book club meets on Thursday at 1 o'clock. It's perks of being a wallflower. So if you have seen the movie, read the book, or never heard of it, but you want to know more, stop by at 1 o'clock. And then we have family story time on Friday at 10:30. And we've been having a walking club on Mondays. Now the weather's a little bit better, so 10 o'clock Monday morning. And then we do have a pretty, we have a legacy grant one coming up pretty soon. And it's called Heck of a New Deal. And they are talking about Minnesota artists, especially during the WPA program, which happened, you know, during, right after the depression. And so it was with Roosevelt. So they do, the presenters are fabulous. There are people that I actually know. And so the Virginia one is coming up pretty soon. It's in October. It's October 9 at 3:30. But if you can't make that, starting next week on Monday, they will be at pretty much, I don't know, 12 different libraries in the next month. So if, just pick up one of these bookmarks at the library, give us a call, and we can let you know where else they are doing their presentation. That's all I have this week.
Thank you, Jody, very much. Okay. We'll go, continue with the Department reports. We'll go to legal. Anything from, from legal today?
Not tonight, sir.
Thank you very much. Pam, any updates that you would like to provide for all of us and the general public?
Sure. We're conducting absentee voting right now. And we've processed about 400 absentee applications. So it's been very, very busy with voters wanting to vote absentee. Few walk-ins, but basically all mail.
Thank you. Sherry, our Finance HR Director, any updates moving forward?
Not yet.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
All right, very good. Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things from the planning zoning old business that we just
we discussed. We are continuing to work on model ordinance for the cannabis sale of and issuance of licenses for that, and we still have some time, but we're continuing work on that, so I just wanted to give you an update. And then we also talked about a zoning audit that we had done with our zoning ordinance, and that there may be some things that we can adjust in there to maybe spur some more housing within the city. Again, still under preliminary discussion, but working towards maybe making some adjustments there as well. Also wanted to give a shout out to our staff for all the work that they've been doing in terms of the permits that have been coming in, both on the engineering side and rental code side. It's been a heavy permit summer, so we appreciate everyone submitting those applications and permits and working with us and our staff, and having the patience and understanding as we work through, you know, getting those processed. Additionally, just another friendly reminder to renters and landlords, excuse me, landlords, not renters, and property owners to get their rental registration applications in and start setting up their inspections.
Thank you, thank you, Jenny. I have a couple of questions for you, if I may. Thank you. I had a telephone call, and I was looking for some clarification, and I went over, up to the Engineering Department, and so as these steam conversions are moving forward, and there's a collaborative between the public utilities and us with respect to permitting, and so as, is there a reminder, am I accurate by saying, as a reminder to the citizens who are starting to convert in the areas, not only businesses, but residential properties, they're required to get a permit to put their steam system in, a mechanical permit of some sort, is that correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And as part of that, there's an ongoing, does the code official go to those and inspect the property with respect to having carbon monoxide detectors and, and sprinkler notifications, that's all part of that as well?
That's part of that, yes, Mayor, there's additional things that they look for, but that is part of it, yes.
Okay, and if they, and by expecting those positions moving forward, they don't only have to get the mechanical permit, they also have to comply in that regard with respect to upgrading their radon or their carbon monoxide and their, and their, the other piece of that.
Correct, we do have a list of mechanical inspection requirements that we send out with every application that is received, after we review the application.
And thank you, and most of them, the contractors are aware or are made aware or should be aware that a permit's required before they start a project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. Councilor Beyondich had her light on, did you have any other questions, please?
Thank you. And this, I guess, would be for Britt, only because we were asked at work, the businesses that have to do the conversion is where can they go for help, because some of the costs for businesses is so high, I fear what may happen. So where could we steer them, or how can we get help to them?
They really should call Jenny or I, we can help walk them through the grant options we have, and that what we know, IRRB has funding, which is through AEOA, VITA still has their funding, we're going to be applying for around five of our downtown program very soon here. And to apply for that program, we need to have applications in, so we need people to apply for our downtown program. So if they call us, we can help walk through some of those options.
Yeah, thank you, Britt, thank you, Councilor Beyondich. And I, so I have one more question, Jenny, for you about zoning, clubs and organizations. Do we have a zoning ordinance that limits or prohibits or controls or oversees clubs and organizations moving into different parts of the community? So say, for example, the Northern Club, the Northern Club has been a, a club and organization that have done a lot of good work in, for the community, it's been a longstanding club that's been up in Northside for many, many years, been grandfathered into the program, but do we have any limitations on any new clubs, organizations that want to come in, not just 501(c)(3), but any, any kind of a club organization that'll come in? Do we have a zoning ordinance that regulates where they can go and what kind of building they can go into?
Yes, we do, it's going to depend on the use of that club, what they're proposing, and the zone district that that property would be located in, we would have regulations that they would need to adhere to. And they can certainly, whoever can give me a call, and I can talk through those rules and regulations with them.
Thank you, I'll be in to see you tomorrow.
Okay.
If you have some time. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Anything else to come before?
You have one other item I forgot to mention.
I asked Britt.
The Virginia Fire Department Open House is on the 26th, which is Thursday from 4 to 7, and that is Jake Keel's last day, so if you go to the Fire Department Open House, give Jake a handshake and tell him thank you for the work, we appreciate that. He wanted to make sure that he was here for this one last event before he left, so we appreciate him doing that. There'll be food and kids obstacle courses, fire display, the fire pup will be there, vendors, lots of fun, so step on down.
Yeah, hot dogs, or tacos in a bag, and another healthy food.
And it's supposed to be warm on Thursday, so it should be good.
It'll be better than it was last year, it's a rainy day, so, thank you. And so one thing, other thing, I want to mention one more thing about the health fair, is we have a health fair coming up on October 10th. For employees, just to let the employees know, and there's, one of the employees have, has sent out an email with respect to try to get enough people for a blood drive donation, and apparently has been successful. I think Megan has been led the way there, and so we now have enough people who donate a part of their blood flow in order to help other people, so thank you. Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up before we adjourn the council meeting this evening? Okay, seeing none, thank you, everybody. We will adjourn our council meeting, today's date is Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, the time is 7:25, I'm 7, I'm sorry, 6, 6:26, that's a nice clock. I can't read the room with numerals, so 6:25 PM, and we adjourn to our next meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, October 8th, at 5:30 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you, we stand adjourned, and good night.